Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 4th, 2021 Meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Good evening, Commissioners. I hope everyone's doing well. First up on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from our July 7th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of the July 7th meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I was not present at the meeting, however, I did watch on video and feel sufficiently briefed on the meeting, so I would vote aye.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Windborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next up, we have a record plat agenda tonight, and there are two of them. Greg or who, does somebody from staff want to read these in, or how do you want to do this?
Yeah, sure. So we have two record plats on the agenda for tonight. RP-8898-2021 and RP-8899-2021. Both for the 700 North Frederick Matten property. They've been reviewed by staff and they're ready for your review and approval tonight.
All right, great. I'm curious why there are two. What's the... Is there a split between the out parcels in the main building?
It's just the way they split out the parcels. They didn't fit all within one plat, you know. Sometimes graphically, it just makes sense to split them out as well.
Okay, got it. All right, great, thanks. Is there a motion, please?
Chair, I move we approve the two record plats as presented.
Second.
All right, let's move to the seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Windborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Next, we have a consent agenda tonight, and there are three items on that. The first is AFP-8975-2021. To satisfy a condition of approval for final site plan application SP 7805-2017. For the property located at 315 East Diamond Avenue, the CBD Central Business District Zone. That's an amendment to final site plan. The second item on the consent agenda is AFP-8914-2021. Conversion of existing bank into a new laundromat and modification to parking lot of the property located at 22 North Summit Avenue in the CBD Central Business District Zone, and that's an amendment to final site plan. And the third is for AFP-8982-2021. To expand the length of the Royal Farms Car Wash Building at 690 Watkins Mill Road in the MXD Zone. And that's an amendment to final site plan. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Can you, Greg, can we just confirm what of, I'm assuming the condition for the Fishman Site one is the massings? The elevation?
It was related to the relocation of the Bud Car. At the time, the application came to the planning commission, that had not been determined yet. And so there was a condition added that that had to come back to the commission.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? All right, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the three consent items as read into the record by the chair.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Windborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. The consent agenda is passed unanimously, and now that takes us to a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for... Did someone have something? There's something? Okay. And that takes us to the BOA-8959-2021. Special exception for a stealth rooftop telecommunications facility at 506 Main Street in the MXD mixed-use development zone. And again, this is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals, and it looks like Caroline Sidon is queued up to present from staff. Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening, everyone. This is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals on special exception case BOA 8959-2021 for rooftop telecommunications facility at 506 Main Street, otherwise known as the Lakeland's Office Building. If we can pull up page 121, please. There is the aerial of the Lakeland's Office Building right on south of Kentland's Market Square and on the north side of some residential Lakeland's Devon Court and retail, Lakeland's Retail to the, on the left, to the west and some additional Kentland's Residential to the east. And the subject property is owned mixed-use development pursuant to Section 24-167 AD2 of the city zoning ordinance. Telecommunications facilities are permitted as a special exception in the MXD Zone. Additionally, because it is located adjacent to residential use, the staff has determined that this site should be, it is a residential MXD Zone, and therefore, the requirements of Section 24-160D-5B, which states that all telecommunications facilities in residential MXD Zones must be enclosed in existing structures, applies to this site. I'm going to turn over the presentation to Christopher Burns, who is here representing AT&amp;T.
Welcome.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christopher Burns on behalf of New Singular Wireless PCSLC, doing business with AT&amp;T. I'll just refer to them as AT&amp;T moving forward. We're seeking approval of a special exception for rooftop communication facility at the name, address, 506 Main Street. So tonight, I usually find it easiest, I'll give a high-level overview of the facility. This includes coverage area, site plan, elevation drawings, as well as photosim. Photosim, so you can see in real-time the camouflage, the screening we're proposing. So as Caroline introduced, this first slide is in aerial view. If IT could go ahead to the next slide.
I think there, there we go.
There we go. Seamless, seamless, perfect. All right, so this location was chosen for a number of different reasons. Most importantly, meeting AT&amp;T's coverage needs, so that can effectively supply wireless emergency as well as non-emergency services in the Kentland's Market Square area, along Main Street, Kentland's Boulevard, Market Street, and surrounding residential areas. So as you can see from this slide, this is the existing AT&amp;T coverage without our proposed rooftop facility, and then if we want to go to the next slide. You could see the difference. This is the proposed coverage after the facility, and this would be, you know, not only outside in home, in vehicle coverage. Can we move to the next slide? So hopefully, you can see this. This is another aerial view of the site plan. So the facility is going to include up to 12 antennas. Initially, we will install six with the intent of installing six more. And it's going to be concealed from the surrounding properties by a screened enclosure above the existing penthouse of the building, which I will dive into a little bit more in-depth. If we could go to the next slide. This is a more zoom, sorry, this is a more zoomed-in aerial view. Here, you can see the building in the center. You'll see where the antennas are, along with irrelevant equipment that the antennas need. Again, all of this will be screens. If you want to go to the next slide. This is the elevation view from the north and east. So you can see the extension that the antennas will provide, and then the screening goes right up to the to the top of it to effectively screen it from surrounding buildings, residential areas, and then next slide. And then this is from the south and then the west. And then the next slide. So I'll dive into the photosim. So we worked hand-in-hand with planning and code administration to ensure the facility's screening would actually match the existing building facade. With the intent, as always, is to just eliminate any visual impact on the surrounding area. We actually did several mockups of different photosims, different designs, to make sure that it would match the building facade, and this is what we landed on. So this slide here shows the proposed view looking south on Market Street West. If we want to go to the next slide. Great, and then this shows the proposed view looking northeast from the corner of Market Street West and Main Street. So you can see the satellite view in the top left, and it shows where this picture was taken from. The bottom below the satellite view is the how the building and the rooftop looks currently, and then obviously, the proposed view is the proposed screening. And then we'll go to the next slide. Right, so this is directly in front of 506 Main Street. I think this is the, the message shows the detail on the screening that it does match the penthouse facade. And then you want to do the next slide, please. Great, and then this shows the proposed view looking southwest from Market Street. Outside of exhibits, that's all I have. I do have three witnesses who are able to confirm the application package tonight and answer any questions from the commission that unfortunately, I might not be able to answer. First would be Ryan Triller. He is a real estate specialist for Smartlink. He's about, for just over five years of experience in the telecommunications industry. Stuff like Camille Shabshab. He is a professional engineer who designed the site plan. He's got well over 30 years of experience. And then lastly, we have Garav Dell. He is a senior radio frequency engineer with just over 20 years of experience.
Okay, great, thanks. Are you, are they going to make a presentation, or they're just available to answer questions?
Yeah, if anything that I can't answer, they'll be able to, they'll be able to answer.
Okay. Just, and what we'll do is we'll also open it up for testimony and comment from the public in just a minute. Did you, so you said that the materials match on this new enclosure, but it's not brick, right? It's something else.
No, it is something else, and the and the staff report, which recommended approval, actually provided a condition that you guys would be able to, excuse me. The commission would be able to put eyes on the exact material once that's finalized.
What is it? What are you proposing?
Camille, do you, do you have the exact material that we would be proposing?
Yeah. It's basically memory brick. RF transparent, and it will be, it's basically made of frigid insulation that has a skin coat of plaster, and that coat of plaster can resemble anything that we wanted to. In this case, it would look just like the building brick.
All right, Commissioners, any, any questions?
Thanks, thanks, John, for that line of questioning, because I did have a question about that, too. So, so in terms of durability, how, how will it hold up? Camille.
I mean, these materials hold up for, you know, I mean, as, as much as basically any architectural material will hold up to at least 15 years or so. And in cases, there's any deterioration, usually, you know, the carriers would come up. I mean, be part of regular maintenance. If anything happens, they would just replace panels. But these things are, you know, like I said, they're made of frigid insulation, which lives almost forever.
So it's painted, essentially.
And it's open at, it's open at the top, of course, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Tech team, would you please play the video on testifying?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, great, thanks. I don't see any attendees. Camille, if you would, I think you're, if you could mute, please. I think we're getting some road noise from you. Thanks. Let me just double-check the attendee list. I don't see any hands up, so let's move forward with, give me a second here. Let's move forward with Caroline, the staff recommendation that we can move to discussion.
Yeah, before I read our recommendations, just wanted to clarify that one of the conditions, the suggested conditions that would go into the resolution regarding the approval of the materials would be for staff to review it, not the commission. Although, if you are, if you would like to change that and want to look at it, we can change that. But, you know, typically, if we were in person, they would, I would have asked them to bring it, and we could pass it around and see it, but this, we've done this in the past, where they've sent us the colors and the material, so we can see it. But with that, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings and recommendation, recommend approval of special exception BOA 8959 with five conditions as listed.
Okay, thank you. Can I revisit real quick, and I apologize, I don't know which packet page it's on, because I just turned back to the beginning, but it was the enlarged plan of the roof plan showing the two the two penthouse structures?
Age 126.
Okay, thanks. So just to be a little bit more clear, these are two, two structures for this, this application, right? One for the top, one for the bottom?
What, one facing each side of the building. I'm not sure if I understand what you mean.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Yeah, one is facing plan north, the other's facing plan south.
Right, right.
Okay.
Two structures.
Okay, and is it a technical issue that they can't be consolidated into one structure?
I don't, I don't, I don't think so. It's, I would consider this one.
No, my, my, I guess my question is really more to the applicant. Why are there two penthouse structures and not just one?
If I may, basically, we're trying to minimize the wind load. We don't want to enlarge the structure and increase the wind load on the building.
Okay, and you're staying away from existing rooftop equipment, I guess, then, is that's why you wouldn't do just one, one in the middle type of, type of thing?
Well, the one in the middle is because our F and I'm far from the roof edge, otherwise, we'd have to get, make antennas and enclosures higher. So in order to avoid that, we'd like to stay closer to the edge.
Understood.
When we do that, we don't want to make one big enclosure, otherwise, it'll become, you know, too much wind area.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. That clarification. Commissioners, where, what do you think of saying this?
Well, Sean, thank you for that question. You kind of answered, I mean, you asked one of my questions. And I'm looking, it says, and please help me understand, it says 12 panels in three sectors, but I see two. Am I, can you point out the three for me? And we put that back up? The, the section we just, the, yes. Oh, okay, so it's all right, these two that are kind of right in front of each other, and then one to the left? Is that the second, the third one? Am I looking at this right?
I don't know if the applicant wants to answer. I mean, I'm happy to answer. But the, the structure on the left is the equipment. So that, so the three sectors are all within the two boxes in the middle. I think there's two sectors in one, and then one sector in another.
But what's that thing to the left where I see? Um, I can't really see it, unfortunately, but it's to the left of the two structures that are right in front of each other.
That's the equipment cabinets.
Okay, so that, that's the, that's the, the third sector then?
That's not a sector. That's just part of the facility where the equipment cabinets, and they get attached to the antennas. But the sectors are the panels. They, they all go, I don't want to be the RF engineer. I think they should answer, but.
If I may chime in here, my name is Garav. I'm the RF engineer. So what you see on the screen, you know, there are three sectors, there are numbers written, it's hard to read, but you will see one through 12, and 1234 is on the east side of the north portion. Those are the four panels of sector number one. Then you have 5, 6, 7, 8 on the south face, and then 9, 10, 11, 12 on the west face. The blue symbols which you see, those are just labels where a, you know, symbol will be pasted, you know, that's that, that's, we call it the MP symbol, where somebody crossing it will come to know, hey, there is an antenna sitting there.
Okay. So it, am, am I incorrect by thinking that some of the sectors are outside the square box?
No, everything is inside, so. There are total 12 antennas, four in each sector. Out of these 12, only six will be installed on day one. Six will be sometime later in the future.
We could either zoom in on that plan to show the center of that, of that piece, and you can actually see the panels. Or we could flip to the very next page and show the elevation that could maybe help explain. So if you zoom in, you can see the equipment there, Danny, just behind it.
Okay, okay.
Manseur roof.
Okay.
When they talk about sectors, they're really just talking about a number of panels, and if you look at the plan really close, you gotta really, you know, look really close. You can see the panels they're proposing to put in there, so don't, I think sectors is whatever it means. But all their panels are inside the two raised components, and then you can see in the elevation, their equipment is sitting on a roof below the manseur, no surround.
Okay, thank you, and, and, and that, that really answers my question. Thanks a lot.
Lloyd, I think you were, had your hand up when we started the discussion.
Yeah, part of, part of my question was already answered just now. Thank you, Danny. But I also have a concern about evolving technologies. Technology is moving very quickly and very, very rapidly in this area, and the antennas are shrinking, obviously. Should, over the next three to five years, this technology change? I see the first condition is that it would be removed at the expense of the applicant. But how often do you end up removing these things once the technology changes? Is this, this is, is this a permanent structure in your mind, or is it a temporary structure?
Garav, I think you might be better suited to answer that question, but this is, in our mind, a, a permanent structure.
So therefore, if, if and when the technology does change and it gets smaller or shrinks, or it evolves in another, to another building nearby, let's say it's higher or taller, you would, you would just leave that the way it is, or would you remove it?
We would, well, so pursuant to the conditions that were proposed by staff, we would, we would remove it at our expense.
Okay.
And, yeah, and that would go, you know, we wouldn't just come in and remove the sectors either, right? It would either, it would be the facade, too.
Yeah, actually, it's a good point, Lloyd, because I don't think the condition reads that way right now. It clearly, they were moving antennas and the equipment, but it doesn't really note that there would be a parapet or a penthouse structure, something, something along those lines. That would be part of that, if it was obsolete technology that that would come down to, it really just, it just notes the the equipment associated with the antennas. So it might be something we need to, need to tweak a bit before we, we finish this up.
Good point.
Thank you. Good call, yeah, good call.
Yeah, and, and we, we obviously would be happy to, to agree with that condition. That's, that's our intent.
All right, anybody else?
Hey, this is Danny. Um, I think Camille had mentioned something about wind load. Can, can you talk a little bit about that and, and, and what that impact might be?
So we have checked the roof structure, basically, that, you know, that it can handle the, the weight and the wind load of the design, basically, to transmit it back to the structure. I'm not sure exactly what you mean, what.
But, so, so I guess wind has to pass through like the bottom of it or something like that? Is, is that what that means?
No, I mean, the bottom of the certainly, right at the top of the parapet, so the whole thing is basically exposed. You know, the whole screen enclosure is exposed to wind load. So, I mean, it's basically, like, you know, one, one so we're not considering that when this is lowered. Although, the bottom of the screen is about four feet above the roof, which is the height of the penthouse parapet, right? But basically, for the purpose of loading, we're considering the wind load on the, you know, whole, the entire flat area of the screen.
Okay, I got most of that. He had John Baueritis a little bit, so I got a little bit.
Man, I think, I think I might be able to help on that one, too. Just, just to say, I think the applicant is explaining that if you were to attach the two doghouses that are up there, you just create a bigger sail, right? And so he's just worried about the size of the wind it catches. The bigger that sail is, the more structure you need, more, you know, damage is going to be done to that rigid insulation that has that has the frost on it, basically, with paint. So there's an advantage to keeping it smaller. It's just a smaller scale, smaller sail.
Okay.
And then I think, I'll, I'll go ahead and piggyback, too, say that, I think the primary reason for doing that is there are two archus that are on the roof. Obviously, they, they're right in the middle of the roof, and so these are two penthouses, stop and start on either side of those, which is great, and I think for us, it's, it's kind of nice, because the two entry doors, door, they're not doors, but the two entry spaces aren't revealed on the side of the front of the, you see, you won't see it from the ground. So actually, to get into the little enclosures, it's, it's actually nice that it faces each other, and they face the rear, and you don't see that missing tooth, which drives me nuts when I see buildings and I see the penthouse enclosures, and you just see that missing tooth of a door in, in the penthouse enclosure. You won't see them here, which is an advantage.
Okay. I also wanted to add the fact that you've got an apartment building directly across the street from the telly building over there, that would look directly at those structures. That's a good point, Matt, that the doors are on the side, not facing the other apartments.
Yeah, let me throw the question for you, for the Commissioners to consider. So I, I think what I'm hearing is being proposed for the material is essentially eaves, it's, you know, fake, fake something. It's fake brick, it's fake texture. It's painted color, it's probably going to fade over time. But it's trying to look an awful lot like the brick that's on the side of the building, the real brick. And I, you know, I have an issue, sort of, anyway, that to the extent that we've, we've asked for and gotten good, good, solid, real materials on a lot of those buildings, not necessarily all through Market Square, I'll acknowledge that, but I wonder if there's some conversation to be had about not using too literal a copy of the brickwork on something that's not brick. If a penthouse ought to be, you know, more modest, maybe a more neutral color, so it doesn't call attention to itself, maybe it's, you know, and that would be kind of a common detail for a lot of buildings like that. You know, the eye stops at the actual real corners, the real, the real brickwork on the top of it, and the penthouse is just sort of disappearing in the background. In terms of the materials, are you all, this is, this is also to the, to the applicants team. Is, is that material about your only choice, and I'll, and I'll just sort of proper another idea. If that thing looked like the, some, some version of the, of the sloped standing seam roof component that was on that building already, is that something you could, you couldn't do metal around this thing? Is that, can I assume that, or could you?
No, I think you'd be better suited to answer this question, but we, yeah, we did, like I mentioned, we did several different mockups, including different material, and Camille, by only correct me if I'm wrong, of what we thought the, you know, the planning commission, as well as the appropriate department would like so.
Yeah, don't jump ahead, though. What I'm really asking about is materiality. What, what are the limitations or constraints to the materials you can use around these antenna?
Yeah, that, Camille, that'd be a question better suited for you.
Well, I mean, the, the material, I mean, primarily has to be transparent to the RF emissions from the antenna. So the material is going to be the same regardless of how it looks. Again, it's made basically of frigid insulation, that's sandwiched between two, you know, like an outside coat and an inside coat. The outside coat could be made to resemble anything, brick or concrete. Typically, you know, things of that nature, stone, brick, concrete. Now, the, but the material itself is going to be the same regardless of what it looks like. But it could look like anything we wanted to look like. I mean, it can't look like glass, for instance, because the material by itself is not really shiny, right?
Yeah.
But it could look like any construction material.
Okay. So Commissioners, let me put it to you, please weigh in. Do you think it ought to take on the look and feel of the brickwork, or should it be something more neutral or something different, or what, what's your, what's your opinion?
I, I mean, I'll throw my two cents in. Since I drive by the, the version of this that's in Old Town that we approved a few years ago, that the oversized cornice on steroids.
Yeah.
That sticks out like a sore thumb, because the new ephes doesn't age, it doesn't get mildewy, it doesn't get the same staining that the sandstone cornices do. I'm actually tend to lean a little bit more towards anything that breaks it up, and, you know, even as much as I hate fake brick at the height this thing is at, it is going to be better. It is gonna be better at camouflaging it than just the white, you know, trying to mimic the sandstone. Um, you know, go, going to a darker color. Would, I think it would just stand out too much. I, I think there's, there's a limit, no matter, because, because whatever we do, we're faking something here. Um. There's a limit to how much we can get it to blend.
Right.
Which is the reality.
I'll, um, I'll, I'll second that thought. I think I, I think I, I hear what you're saying, John, uh, and I'm not, um. Completely convinced of this opinion I'm about to give you, but I think that, uh, that, uh, uh, I think, you know, similar to what, what Phil's saying, I think is. A little bit of complexity up there, you know, a little bit of noise, visual noise.
Mm-hmm.
Mimic that brickwork and it may, it may actually ironically disappear a little bit more. So you don't, it doesn't quite, um. It, 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 your, your eye may just have it disappear, cause it may, even though it will be in the end a different color, whether it fades or whether it doesn't fade, it's going to be a different color. Um, in the end, but, um, but maybe just the, the sort of visual clutter of having the, the brick detailing up there will sort of make it, make it disappear. So I, I, I. I lean towards what, what was presented tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
I have to agree, yeah, with the two architects there. Uh, my feeling is that we don't usually look up at that building too much. There aren't too many tall structures around that part of Kentland's. Except for the apartment building across the way. And I think, uh, just the fact that it blends in or appears to blend in so well with the existing, uh, brick and, uh. The, uh, the design, I think it just, as Matt said, it just becomes part of the building and it's, it's not sticking out. I, I would just say it blends in fairly well and keep it that way.
Yeah, it does in this, this view, no question. I, I was thinking more about execution and, you know, lifecycle of the, of the material itself.
Yeah, I think execution here is, is the real risk and, and I, and I don't mind putting it on staff. Uh, to sort of make the final approval, because I'm not really sure how they would sort of, you know, get it painted up and bring it into, you know, wherever we are at the time. In council or on video and sort of have a touch and feel. I think that, we gotta sort of leave that to staff. But it's one of those things that's going to be, uh, probably done by the time staff can really approve it.
Yeah. Well, I, I think it also, I, I think it goes to something of a review of the drawings where. Uh, and this is getting into detail that, um, uh, you know, I, I just want to put it on the record, but we don't necessarily need to get into the specifics, but. Things like score joints and the shape of the, the faked brick and the way the joints are done, that, that it's. You know, there's, there's some integrity to creating that texture that would be, um, that would be present if it was brick and not just, you know, skin deep paint, paint lines, but something that actually has. The depth and the shadow line and the potential for texture. So if it's, if it's an eaves treatment, it's, it's got some, you know, modeled. Texture, you know, more than just a smooth sand texture, but something that probably. Has a little regularity to it, that, that the brickwork has, you know, score joints or reveals that, that set it off in a way that would, would remind you of brick. So it isn't just really truly faux, faux finish, but something that has a little bit of the, it mimics the texture too.
Yeah, and, and to, to that point, and you, you're not going to know this until it's up, but like. If this thing gets installed and it sticks out like a sore thumb, because it's, you know, shiny and new and a, a different color than the brick and it looks plastic. You know, there are, there are artists who specialize in painting ephes and painting these synthetic materials to look aged. Um, and that may be the answer you gotta go with. You, there are. They're the same people who, you know, make Vegas and Disney World look like Vegas and Disney World. Um, so it, it's, it's doable.
Yep. The Trump, the Trump-loy thing, right?
Uh.
Um, okay, any other?
Well, and, and I, I guess, because I, my, my concern is how, how it's going to wear and age over time. And I guess kind of what Phil just mentioned, maybe kind of allows some of those concerns, but I, I. I'm not sure. Uh, my concern is, is that it will age differently and wear differently than brick. And what's it gonna look like? You know, I mean, I know, we know, we have an idea of what the building will look like. Ten, fifteen years from now, but how will this look? And will it look weathered and beaten and look like it needs to be replaced or something like that?
For sure.
That, that's my concern. Is that? Am I the only one, or?
No, no, and, and you're, and I think you're right, Danny, but I, I don't think we have to wonder. It will look different.
Okay.
It's a different material, so.
Okay.
But I don't think in fifteen years, that thing is going to be up on that roof, quite frankly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's something I, I believe that the, uh, the, probably the best way to counter that, because we can't put stone or metal or anything else. Stops the RF, you know, signal.
Right, right.
Uh, that, uh, you know, we, we trust that this panel will not warp, you know, so when I won't be pulling apart at the corners, we trust. That, uh, you know, it has structural integrity at the cornice part of it, so it doesn't start to dissolve, you know, we trust that it physically will be there. So what we're really talking about is just color and texture, right? Um, you know, and I think the best way to deal with that is the way that actually was proposed tonight, I think. Uh, which is to add all that detail, add all that, the fake brickwork detail to it, which I think is kind of a bit, a little bit of clutter. And will take away from the fact that when, when you and I look at this in five years, ten years, we'll see that that's clearly a different, and added on. Little, you know, uh, you know, penthouse surround. Uh, and it, uh, you know, we will see it. It's just there'll be enough visual clutter that, you know, the folks walking by and the, and the hopefully new, you know, apartment buildings around and the existing apartment building, and nobody will. It, it won't offend anyone, uh, because of that visual clutter. I don't see a better solution.
Well.
To what you're pointing out is absolutely going to happen.
But what, yeah, but, oh, okay, then maybe what I'm asking is, is might, might there be a condition that, that we have an inspection to, to make sure that. If it does start to warp or crack or fade or do something and, and it starts to. Weather more so than, than, and just look. Yucky. I mean, how can we? I- is that something that we do, we've done in the past? I mean, as far as inspections of current, concerned with that, with those kinds of materials? And I guess maybe that's a Caroline. And Greg question, and John, flicking?
We have not had a condition about inspection. I mean, part of having a special exception is. Uh, it is, you can put additional requirements on the use. Um, or the special exception can be revoked, so it, we could put a condition that it be maintained. To the, um, you know, what, what is, uh, initially presented, uh, and that it's a maintenance issue, um. It's sort of implied, uh, 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 you know, if you install something, it needs to be maintained. Um, but we, it, we could make it that more explicit.
And I'm not trying to make this onerous, but, but my concern is, is, is. The where and how it's gonna look as, as opposed to the brick, we, we, you know, and that, that's my concern.
I mean, my, my two senses, we can control how it looks on day one, and that should be the focus. I. There's, there's a limit to, realistic, practical limit to how we control how it's going to look fifteen years from now. I think we're sort of. Accepting that, I think. You know, from, from my perspective, I'm assuming AT&amp;T in this case is a tenant on the building, they're leasing rooftop space, just like somebody leases office space, correct?
Correct.
So, I. I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm assuming your lease agreement with the landlord has requirements for maintenance and upkeep of your installed facilities, correct?
Right, right. So we will have, you know, I would say once a quarter, somebody come out and not only check on the antenna, but also check on the, the, the facilities. I mean, when we say facility, that includes screening, equipment cabinets, you know, the full suite.
So I, I think that, from my perspective, the, the first line of defense here is the fact that a landlord's not going to want a crumbling screen wall on top of his building and is going to make his tenant fix it. Um, so I'm not worried about that, frankly.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think it's a good point. And I, um, I, I. It, it, once we get happy with the fact that this, the technique for doing this is acceptable, um. And we have a, we have sort of a check valve with the, the staff looking at the final selection of finishes, maybe with a mockup panel on site to, to get some sort of a one-to-one comparison. Um. Then, yeah, it really falls to, to either a, a maintenance or a neighborhood services kind of enforcement if things fall out of, completely out of, out of whack. Um, but, but maybe more to focus the conversation, since we're doing a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. What our, what our task at hand is, is really talking about compatibility of this facility with the existing development and, and. You know, adjacent uses and will it have an impact on, um, on use or on, um. You know, others and other, other folks enjoyment of, of the general area. And I don't, I don't really see a big threat to that, frankly. And I, I think we could argue some of the architectural integrity things, but. At a, at a planning and zoning level, um, I think the compatibility is fairly compelling with, with the conditions that. The level of quality with the detailing that goes into putting the screen up. Um. You know, falls within some parameters. I think we're, we're getting close to that on this, this condition.
Okay, and, and I certainly trust. That staff will, will make the right decision, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not anywhere second guessing them. I want to make sure that that's clear.
I, the, the one thing I may suggest slightly modifying is condition number five, that applicants submit the materials to be approved by staff. And also that as part of closing out the permit, staff. You know, view the installed facility to make sure that the aesthetics are in line with, with the approved materials. Cause there is, there is always a, a great. It is not hard for a material sample and an installed finished product, uh, to be drastically different, and I think, I think. That's, that's the, what needs to be approved and the opportunity to require the applicant to, you know, bring out Michelangelo to touch up the paint or do whatever we gotta do is really after it's installed and before the permit's closed out.
That's fair. Do we have, um. Do we actually have installation details for the finishes now, or is that yet to come?
Now, we get more, we would have a more detailed, um, during, I would assume, the building permit stage, so at this point, we're only thinking, planning and zoning.
Okay. Um, so I think maybe, um, Phil, Matt, you can help out here, please. The, this issue of the applicant to submit final stealth materials, I think it's also a little bit about the installation details, um. You know, all, all of that that goes with pulling off that look, that faux.
Um, yeah, I'm trying to put out a sentence. Um. But I haven't really been able to come up with it. I think my brain sort of shut off a couple of minutes ago, but it's, uh, I think, uh. Uh, it probably, it probably has to do with some combination of, uh, uh, you know. Actual finished detailing, so rather, it's not detailing in a sort of structural sense, but detailing in a architectural, uh, decor sense. So I think some of the things that John was mentioning about, um, you know, scoring and the physical, you know, profile of the cornice, uh, as presented tonight. Uh, should, should be in that, you know, final product. And, uh, construction quality in keeping with the, you know, the, uh. Length of life of the materials below it, you know, so it, you know, it needs to be both the high-end sort of architectural quality and detailing that we were presented tonight. And are approving, uh, to move on to the Board of Appeals, as well as the actual construction quality, uh, meeting, you know, the, the. The durability and construction quality of the building it's sitting on.
Yeah, I, I think that can all, condition five can just be, I think, expanded to encompass that, you know, applicant to submit final stealth finished materials. Detailing and, you know, construction means and methods to be reviewed by staff. Um, prior to issuance of a permit. At the conclusion of construction, applicant to review, you know, obtain staff approval of the final installed finished condition for conformance with. You know, design intents, it's something along those lines.
Um. It, it, I, I want, I kind of want the words quality, um, um, both, you know.
Yeah.
Aesthetic and durability are, are the words I'm going after. I don't know that those are the right words, but.
Uh, uh, yeah, that, that's kind of what I was getting at, is visual appeal, so I think we're, we're. I'm, I'm okay with something around that, Caroline and, and Greg. Whenever you can come up with.
We're gonna need to get there now.
I'm gonna punt that one, now.
Yeah, let's get there now. Caroline, do you have some notes you want to try on us?
Well, I have, have different notes for.
Come on, Greg, help me out.
I, I don't have the whole thing yet, but I, beginning I have is applicant to, to submit final. Uh, stealth materials and finished detailing to be approved by staff. Prior to the issuance of a telecommunications permit and.
Actually, I, let me, let me stop you there. I think, um, is the telecommunications permit, when, when does that happen? We're really talking more like building permit or, or?
That's what, that's the building per, instead of a building permit.
Okay. All right, trying to, trying to catch up.
And, and then, uh, uh, staff to confirm installed. Um, facility meets. I gotta read this down. Meets, uh, same quality.
End durability.
And durability, thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Lloyd.
Uh, the rest I lost as, um. As originally designed.
For it to final approval.
I mean, certainly as presented and discussed tonight, certainly.
How, how about, can I, I've been typing while you've been writing, can I try one on for you?
All right.
Go for it.
Applicant to submit final materials, finishes and construction details for stealth materials for staff review and approval prior to construction. In order to confirm aesthetic compatibility and long-term durability prior to issuance of the telecommunications permit.
All right, we got it recorded.
Yeah.
We can pull that off the recording.
I mean.
What about the, uh, the follow-up at the end? Installed and inspected.
And then I think the, the last sentence is just, staff to inspect installed materials for conformance with approved samples as part of permit closeout.
Okay, perfect.
I'd also like to amend the first condition based on the previous, uh. Previous conversation where it says, uh, the antennas equipment shelter, and I would put in penthouse screening, backup generator and associated equipment. Shall be removed by the applicant in the applicant's expense. That way we put in the, the actual enclosure itself.
Great idea.
Yeah, great.
No. All right, I think we've got it on the record for the, the, uh, modified first condition. Modified fifth condition. Applicants team, anything that you heard from that discussion that worries you or concerns you, or you want clarification on before we move forward?
Um, only thing is, when, when would I be able to, um, the proposed conditions sound great in my ears, when, just out of curiosity, when I'd be able to put eyes on them? Um, would that be within the next twenty-four hours, or?
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, between now and Friday is the package is due for the Board of Appeals, so. That package will include the, uh, planning commission's recommendation, which will have those. I, I can get it to you tomorrow, Chris.
I mean, a- as they stand, they do, they, they sound fine and we've got no, no objections.
Caroline, let me ask you, just, just for the purposes of communicating with the, um. Board of Appeals and to completely simplify the conditions, never mind, I don't really, the conditions are great, let's leave them alone, but in, in just terms of a narrative. Our fundamental objective is to ensure compatibility between this penthouse and the existing building. And the existing building has a fairly high standard in terms of quality and appearance and all, so that's our whole issue.
Right.
So when, 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 uh, we write up the CPC that goes from the planning commission to the Board of Appeals, we have the ability to also write a little narrative. Um, so we, in addition to the conditions, so we can include, um, the, those thoughts, uh, that the board receives them.
Just to be clear, it's not an arbitrary thing about a penthouse, it's, it's this compatibility thing that we're, we're focused on. Thank you. All right, is there any other, or are there any other comments or concerns on this? Any reason not to move forward with a recommendation to the Board of Appeals?
No.
Okay, I'm seeing no, no flailing arms or. Worried looks, all right. Um, so with the five conditions amended, um, as recommended by the staff, is there a motion, please?
Chairman.
Here, go ahead.
Go ahead, Matt, I got Phil.
All right, Mr. Chair, I moved it to the planning commission based on the exhibit submitted applicant's testimony, staff report findings and recommendations. Recommended approval of sp- special exception BOA eight-nine-five-nine dash twenty-twenty-one with the five, uh. Amended, partially amended conditions as, uh, listed and read into the record.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Uh, Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I, but I. Um, thank you very much, that passage unanimously for recommendation to Board of Appeals. Um, appreciate your presentation and, um, nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, hey, I appreciate your time. Um, and if I could just say one, one somewhat informal thing, I've done a lot of these virtual hearings in many jurisdictions. This is by far the most organized hearing, virtual Zoom hearing, I, so please give. Give a round of applause to your IT and then, and you all as well, uh, it was very fluid, so, uh. We could just keep doing this forever, as far as I'm concerned.
No, 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 we're done with this application, we're done. Just to be clear.
All right, hey, thanks, thanks again, thanks again, have a great evening.
Good luck.
You're welcome, thanks. All right, um, and now, uh, we move to our site plan agenda, and there's. All right, and now we move to our site plan agenda, and there's only one of those tonight. And that's for AFP dash eight eight seven one dash twenty twenty one renovation of an existing building and associated minor site improvements for one two one six seven Darnstown Road in the C one local commercial zone. This is amendment to final plan. Presenting from staff is Sam Copeland. Good evening, Sam.
Hi, good evening, everyone. IT staff, please turn to packet page two eighteen. All right, there it is. So this is for application AFP dash eight eight seven one dash twenty twenty one requesting improvements to the existing property at one two one six seven Darnstown Road. The subject property is located in the local commercial C one zone and received Planning Commission approval with site plan S five twenty seven B in the year nineteen eighty three for the construction of the existing restaurant. More recently, the Planning Commission approved site plan S dash five twenty seven L in nineteen ninety three for parking lot and access changes related to SHA property takings for Quince Orchard Road. The applicant submits this application to renovate the building for one new restaurant tenant and one new retail tenant. The existing building foundation and a portion of the existing walls will be preserved for the building renovations that include a new covered outdoor dining area for restaurant patrons. Minor site improvements related to the building renovation are also proposed in this application. Here tonight to present the application and answer any questions that you may have is Bill McGruder with the McGruder Companies, Scott Wolford with Colliers Engineering and Design, and Nicholas Lucarelli with Nicholas Lucarelli Architects.
Thanks, Sam. Good evening. Mr. McGruder and the rest of the team.
Evening.
As you come in from the the waiting room. Um, so I'll take it quickly from here, just as a as a brief introduction. Bill McGruder and my brother Mike is on here as well, representing the McGruder Companies. In a nutshell, we've got an old Pizza Hut that was here, I think the the lease was, it could have been thirty years that it's that it's been here. Or close to it. So it's so it's it's a bit of an institution here, but has has run its course. So you know, start by saying, whether you know it or not, there is, there are several websites that are dedicated to recycled Pizza Huts.
Oh, yeah.
It's a fairly depressing lineup, to be honest. I the first and foremost, when when we got notice that the that the the Pizza Hut folks were moving out, which was about almost two years ago to the day. I was bound and determined not to end up on that on any of those websites. And it we we were approached pretty quickly by by some groups that would that would take it as is and slap some paint on it. But again, it was not I don't think it was not the way we like to do business. It was fine as a Pizza Hut. Ran its course, but it needs to be something different. So we we kind of put our thinking caps on and got our group together and started looking at how we could repurpose the as much of the building as we could while coming away with something that didn't resemble an old Pizza Hut, but but also still kept with the the architecture of the existing center. We didn't want a standalone, you know, something that had no no resemblance to the rest of the center. So that led us to design what we have, which is actually using is using the existing footprint of the building. We're actually drawing the building back in to the so the the outdoor seating area, which you'll see in the the presentation, is actually part of the existing current existing structures, the the size of the building actually shrinks. And we're going to use that some of the existing footprint as as outdoor seating. I think we and and the part of the reason why we're here two years later, we had, we've we've had quite a bit of activity of people interested in the building. We were down the road a little ways and we're discussing an application about a year ago for a a single restaurant use in the entire building. And a few few different things, not least of which being COVID, you know, everybody started to draw their their future plans back in a bit. So we then went back to the drawing board and looked at at a different design, somewhat similar to what what we had come up with through the build kind of build to suit process with that with that group. But now we we wanted to go to a a spec built building. So we we now have a design for, excuse me, for two, potentially two different uses with the flexibility that we could buy combined uses if somebody wanted the whole building. So are the way we arrived here, as as I said, it's two years. So so a lot of thought has been put into it. And I think we've come up with a with a design and a and a plan that that I think we can all be proud of. So with that, I will pass the virtual microphone to Scott Wolford with Colliers Engineering.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you pull up the presentation? It's packet page two nineteen. Thank you. The next slide. So the site, the the actual building is located in the north end of the existing Potomac Valley Shopping Center. It's at the really at the intersection of Quince Orchard and Hillstone Road. Next slide, please. So you can see on this slide that the outline of the building is the double line. So there's the vestibules being removed from the west side of the building. Two feet being removed from the west side of the building and about thirteen feet from the north end of the building. So the gray shaded area is the proposed footprint. The intent was to create an outdoor canopy covered dining area at the north end of the building and to widen the the pedestrian plaza along the the west side of the building that faces the parking lot to make it more welcoming, have places for people to be able to sit outside and and do things or gather after they've been in either of the shops. Next, oh, and then also on here, we we added one motorcycle parking stall. We improved the handicap accessibility and handicap parking stall to the building. We've added a slight ramp there that gets you up to the pedestrian plaza. And then this also shows the ADA compliant walkway that we're going to do the best we can with State Highway Administration to make the connection to the the existing sidewalk along Quince Orchard Road. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the the final site plan. This shows the the drainage connections that we're making for the area drains around it. This also shows this, the way that the setbacks have evolved over time. The 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 black dashed line that's the furthest out into Quince Orchard Road and and Hillstone Road was the original property line prior to the acquisition of right of way. The next line back with the the truncated corner on it is the actual property line today. And then the the two subsequent linebackes from there is the line that the that the projection of the canopy can be in, and then the setback line. So the the building as it sits today is in the front yard setbacks, but will conform to the front yard setbacks when the construction is completed. Next slide, please. This is the landscape plan. So we're re landscaping around this. We're doing a a good mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs. We've added three trees to the site and then some evergreen ground cover to kind of clean up and spruce up the landscaping around the building, but still leave some of the views open for the 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 shop owners that might be there, the tenants that'll be in those spaces. Next slide, please. So this is the final rendered site plan. It's it's the rendering is the the portion that that we we revise as we do the construction. The rest of the shopping centers, the the actual air photo. Here you can see the sidewalk connection out to Quince Orchard Road. The new handicap parking stall that extended pedestrian plaza along the the front of the building, the welcoming side of the building for people to gather. There's a sidewalk around the back for service to the back of the building. And then the new landscaping. Next slide, please. And I'll now turn it over to Nick Lucarelli, the the architect for the facility to talk about the the building facades and the and the architecture.
Okay, thank you. Is he on? Nick, you're on mute.
Hello. Are you can hear me now?
We can. Thank you.
Great, great. So you can see by the elevations, we've incorporated the Carter Rock, which is part of the shopping center material palette. We're going to be using masonry above the Carter Rock. We like to use the prefabricated standing seam metal awnings over the large storefront frame configurations. We're trying to get as much daylight into the spaces to allow for natural lighting. We've worked with the Planning Commission to incorporate a continuous parapet around the building so that the RTU units will be enclosed and no one will be able to see them. We've considered a canopy for the outdoor seating. And that will also be a metal standing seam. We're we're looking at a factory finished PVC cornice that will sort of top off the parapet. Long back wall, we have an existing CMU wall which will face with brick. So we'll be using new brick on the existing back wall. Above that brick will also be hardy pink plank siding. We can see that in the next elevation, if you could change the slide. So there's the differentiation between the brick and the siding on the back wall. But that is the parapet that we've raised to enclose the RTUs. And I think that really kind of gives us a synopsis of the materials that we're using in the look.
Okay.
We're after something fresh to attract some retail users.
Sure, good. All right, thank you. Is that the end of the presentation or is there more to? I guess, Mr. McGruder, is that it for the president? Yeah, I think that that about covers it. I think there's some more materials in there. If answer some questions, but I think that is the better part of it. The one thing that I will point out as we look at the at the elevations. And and I'm sitting here and I can I can look out my window and see the see the building from my office. The it should be noted that the elevation of the of the Pizza Hut itself is is significantly below the townhouses that would that would face the back. So that although that the back wall may look unimpressive or kind of stark, it's you really don't, you wouldn't have the the elevation view that you see dead on as it shows in the in the plan form. It really, you kind of look, be be looking at the top of the building, you know, not down into it, but the more of the the cornice piece than than the than the wall. You you raised a good point, and I was going to wait until the question came up, but since you brought it up, you might want to bring up the site plan just to reinforce that point, because I was also thinking about the visibility of the rear elevation as you drive up. There there's some, there's some lease space that's sort of behind the center too. I think there's a gym back there, some other things. So it's not a, it's not a service corridor. It's actually another portion of the center. And and I'm not sure I that this moment, if maybe you want to show that that's pretty well screened as well. Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a fence there as well that runs the the length of the property. So you really, there's no point until you're on our property that you would really have a direct line of sight to that that back. Okay. It's it's more similar, so it would, it's the the most similar to it would be the Jamelle's Building, which is down on the on the other end of the of the center. Because both of those are right up against the property line. So it's it's a similar reveal and I don't, I don't think you can see the back of that building. It's and it's it's a flat brick, for the most part, brick facade down there too. Okay, very good. Thanks. Commissioners, any questions for the applicants team before we go to the public?
I just, sorry. Go ahead. Who is that?
Lloyd had his hand up. He's on mute.
A question about connectivity. I really like the connectivity to Quince Orchard Boulevard and the sidewalk. I think that's a great, a great new asset that you're contributing to. But my concern is between the bank and the current Pizza Hut property, if you will. There's no connectivity. There's no sidewalk. There's nothing. If I'm walking across from the either the bank or coming from one of the shops in the main part of the shopping center, I have to cross over not just the parking lot, but an exit that goes on to Quince Orchard Boulevard. Are there any provisions or any attempt to try to ameliorate that, to make that crosswalk more pedestrian friendly from the main center to this outstanding parcel?
Um, you know, it's, I I I completely recognize your the the issue there and we and we've had it, we have it at a couple of different spots in the center. And unfortunately, it's a it's an existing condition that really there, we don't have much room to add any any connectivity to it. I just, you know, there's just no, no real room and the and the elevations are pretty significant. You know, as as you know, from walking across there from the from the entrance down to where the bank is, is a pretty significant, you know, probably ten to fifteen foot drop. So and we have, we have a similar condition on the other side where where MedStar is. And and believe me, I I make those walks. And you know, I don't know how many times in a week and there are, you know, I've looked at every different option of how we could work a sidewalk in in any of those locations, and it's it's really difficult. Is it, is that, is that aerial accurate that there is no crosswalk at the the driveway, that Y driveway that that the the closest connection to Quince Orchard Road? Sort of right under valley in that that title. Um, there, you you mean at the at the entrance? Yeah. Yeah, there's a there, it it's there is a crosswalk directly across it. Okay, it doesn't, it isn't in this picture, though. Um, no, it may, you know, may be faded, but it but it's you know, it's it's a, it's a flat portion there that that connects to the other side. With, and I think it has the, I think it has the the depressed sidewalk leading to those areas. So it's so it's flat straight across. Yeah, okay. Good point, Lloyd. We'll need to keep track of that. But 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 I agree that the connectivity to the center itself out to the streets has been problematic since we've, since we've owned the center in the, you know, we bought it in the eighties.
What about at least putting something in that would make a good demarcation? As you go up Quince Orchard Road, you can see there's that small island where the exit and the entrances into the center itself. If you could somehow, and I don't know if you have to go through the state highway or whoever or the county, but to be able to make a clear demarcation of a continuation of the sidewalk, or at least so the pedestrians know that they can cross over that little island and connect up to the new entranceway into the into the the property.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would be all for adding some adding some markings there. And I and I don't know if you know, we're happy to go out there and paint it ourselves and and we've got all the stencils that we would need to do it. I'm not sure if we're legally allowed to do it, but I, you know, I'd be happy to do that.
If I could. And if I could add just one thing, so IT staff, if you could please turn to packet page two eighteen. Um, I think it's a very valid discussion, but one thing I just want to make sure we're all aware is that when you look at packet page two eighteen, this aerial view actually shows the property line. And you can see that back in nineteen eighty nineteen ninety three, there was an SHA taking, you know, that took part of this property. So as you can see with the blue line, the blue line demarcates the actual tax lot. And the crossing that we're talking about appears to be an SHA right of way. So you know, if there is going to be an improvement there, we would most likely need to get SHA involved for that improvement.
Good point. I tell you what, Lloyd, it's a, it's a really good point. Let's, let's make sure we we resolve it during our discussion, but I think we have a question on the table about what, if anything, is happening to improve the connectivity and right now, really not much. I think is the answer to the question. So let's, let's add that to our discussion to maybe resolve when we we get to that that part of it, if that's okay with you.
Sure, that's fine, Jim.
Good. All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Just a real quick one for for the architect to just why, why such limited glass on the side elevation, the north side? We have, you know, nine feet of stone on either side of the opening there, and it doesn't, I mean, it would seem like your layout would allow for quite a bit of interior.
Right. And you know, the fact is, we're running out of wall space for a quick serve sort of layout. They like walls to back up their equipment with and their seating with. And that's really the only justification we have on that one. We're we're lacking wall space to back up equipment to.
Uh, we're, we're lacking wall space to back up equipment to.
Okay.
So to follow that up, just, and just to be clear, i- is there a scenario, and I guess this is for the Magruder team, is there a scenario where this pad site would be? Um, bought or leased and developed with a, with another building on it, or is it, you're committed to doing this spec building and then you're gonna lease it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, there's no. We're not, we're not big sellers of anything, um, so, you know, our intention is to build it. Uh, build it spec and lease it, and we're, we're, we are in discussions with a couple of groups, um, no signed leases yet, but. Um, that's, you know, our intention is to, to build it and lease it, just like we, we have all.
Good, I, I guess to Matt's point, you know, there, there are a handful of examples of even chain restaurants where. They do a lot more with wraparound glass and essentially inboard all the prep and all the service stuff. Um, you know, making it much more transparent and sort of welcoming and light and airy and all. Um, and so I guess what I'm kind of leading up to is, are you building to a certain assumption about who the tenant is? Or is it a very generic sort of box at this point?
So, so I would say, I would say the, probably the latter. Um, I think we're, we're keeping it as simple as we can for the moment. Um, but I would not be surprised if we came back with um, some, some changes to the building that were more tenant specific. If, if there was somebody that, that wanted to, to change or add glass or, and, or even if it was a single, uh, single use building. That, that could change the facade a bit. I, that said. Um, as I led off, I don't, I also don't want a, I want it to, to look like our building and not somebody else's. So, no matter what we do, I want to maintain a um, visual connectivity to the rest of the center. And again, not meaning that I don't want it to be, you know, cookie cutter with everything else, but I, I want it to. Uh, I want the visually, the, the center to flow well, um. So, yeah, so it's, long and short, we're, we were trying to, to keep it as, as leasable to as, as larger group as we could. But the fact of the matter is, you know, we're gonna be redoing the whole, the whole thing if, if we are. Uh, presented with a, a concept that we could tweak this and add some windows and add some interest or, you know, whatever the case may be. Um, you know, I, I wouldn't be surprised, we came back uh, looking to get those changes approved.
So the, the expectation would be, you really wouldn't start the work until you had somebody locked up as a tenant?
No, I, I think we will, um, but, but I, I. Knock on wood, I'm fairly confident we could have somebody in the near future. Now that, if that fell through, there's also the possibility that we would. Um, just pause our leasing and get the building up, uh, because it, we could be, you know, I, I think we'd, we'd be. Open to a much larger group with, you know, not everybody has the, the foresight to see. You know, in three dimensions what they, they look at it too, so there could be that case, but I'm, you know, again, knock on wood, we could have somebody in the near future.
Okay, okay, that, that's great, um, thanks, um, commissioners, any other questions? All right, what I will do for the record is ask if anybody in the, the uh, audience watching tonight would like to. Um, testify our count of this application, however, we'll also note for the record that under the attendee tab, there's exactly one attendee and it's. Somebody named Z Norris, which I, I happen to know is a placeholder for our tech team, so. Um, not seeing anyone even logged in for that. If somebody has called in, tech team, uh, just remind me, if somebody's called in, would they still show up in this or might they be? Um, uh, flagging you some other way?
We've never had a call in, I would assume they would be, they would show, uh, but it does not appear that anyone has called in.
Okay, thanks for that. So let's go ahead and move into the recommendation from staff and then we can go to discussion if somebody does end up. Logging in, we can, we can, we can get their, their input if they, if they come in. So Sam, please.
Sure, so staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted. The applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation. Grant AFP dash eight eight seven one dash twenty twenty-one amendment to final plan approval. Finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four one seventy and twenty-four one seventy-two A of the city zoning ordinance with three conditions.
Great, thanks Sam. Uh, any questions about the recommendation commissioners? Yeah, well, I'll at least start the discussion, I, I, um, it, it's funny um, that it, that it came up about the, the websites to track. What happens to old Pizza Hut, so I, I've sort of chuckled at some of those, those examples over the, over the years. And, and quite frankly, looked admiringly at the, read admiringly the story about the architect that came up with the roof that then became iconic for, for the brand. So there's something about the, the days when buildings also stood for the, the brand that they were. Um, they contained, that was kind of an interesting, interesting point in history, um, that we've sort of lost, but anyway, that's just sort of sentimental aside there. Um, overall, I think, I think it's great to see the investment in the, in the building and, and see where this is moving. Um, you know, at some point, we're, we're being a little subjective and deciding whether or not it looks good, but it, it looks good, it's good quality materials, it makes sense to have it. Um, out on the corner of the site where you're likely gonna get a lot of visibility for folks coming, um, coming southbound on, on, or I guess westbound on Quince Orchard Road. Um, the only concern I would bring up is the rear wall, but I think there's, there's a. I'm studying the site plan, there's probably not a lot of reason to worry about it because of the, the sightlines. Um, and I, I share, I think it was Matt that brought it up, I share his concern that. You know, I think in most retail situations, we'd like to see more rather than less glass, you know, expecting that that's what's gonna activate and, and sort of invite people in, but um. You know, you're the, the Magruder team, you're certainly the retail experts and know what, what makes sense to um. To the tenants you're, you're courting, so um, I, I, I don't see much else to bring up on my side, my concerns, officials, let me, let me please open it up to you and. And uh, let you chime in with. Anything?
Uh, I mean, I'll just add that you, you certainly will see the back of the building uh, from the, the side road, which I can't think of the name of right now. But so if you're, if you're coming out of Kentlands towards Quince Orchard on that side road. Um, you'll, you know, you'll, you'll see the back of the building, you have to crane your neck around a bit and it's not. At all uh, abusive to me, and I think obviously putting the patio, which will hopefully be active, knock on wood. Uh, will thoroughly visually distract from any kind of need to make it look like the front of the building, so I'm, I'm fine with it, but I just wanted to. Remind everybody, you, you probably can take a peek at it as you're pulling up to that stoplight, but. Uh, but that's about it, that's about the only time you'd ever see it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the, the one concern I do want to put on the table, and I think. It's, it's, it's a larger concern for the center because, you know, I think we're all. Experienced in using, in using the center, going to the businesses there, it's sort of a, a core, core selection of services for the area. Um, there, there is some really awkward pedestrian pathways from the parking to, to the various stores, and this one, this one has a similar one. I, I think on a side conversation, it really ought to be considered more carefully how. Maybe through striping, maybe through um, you know, some dedicated walkways within the parking area, I, I don't have an answer per se. Um, but, but I think if, if, if this corner is resurrected as a viable component. With say two businesses, and I think, I think a more serious look at how you. How you provide a natural connection from the, the larger field of parking that's down kind of closer to the bank drive-in and likely to capture, capture some of the books that park there. Um, so they can walk up and feel safe crossing, it's very awkward where the entrance into the center is there, that's very wide and it changes elevation as you described and. It just, just to kind of establish a safe, a safe passage. I, I think it's a light touch at this point, because as you said. The, the state highway owns that right away, that's, that's really where the crosswalk belongs at the sidewalk, but. Coming up from that lower field of parking, um, there, there must be some way to, to flag a safe zone or, or create some sort of a. A pedestrian friendly pathway. Um. You know, kind of a refuge in a way, so that if somebody is walking through there, they, they kind of have a sense of where they can go and not. Not necessarily get caught by a car that's, that's coming here going through that, that entrance. But um, anyway, commissioners, any other thoughts on that or, or any consideration on that?
At the very least, we, we ought to be connecting those two sidewalks, right, just, just uh, from a paint standpoint, right? So that, that's the, the sort of baseline piece and there's no permanent construction there, SHA shouldn't, shouldn't ever notice. Right, we're not, we're not curbing it yet as the, as that baseline solution, and if there's a more sophisticated, hopefully. Better solution to slow down that intersection, slow me down in that intersection uh, would be great. But that, but at the very least, we ought to go ahead and paint that thing, or the applicant ought to paint that thing, just connect the two sidewalks.
At least looking at the, the aerial that was up there, I think the one, the one thing I'm struck by is that. There, there likely is a, a solution of, you know. Clear crosswalks and, and separate pedestrian paths, the, the problem is, it gets rid of your. Planted green area in, in your islands, I mean, that's, you know, uh, it's a, it's a. Sort of a catch twenty-two that, you know, you can, you can look at an island and, you know, continue a sidewalk and draw a crosswalk to connect it to another island, but all the islands are green. So I don't think we wanna, you know. Take out all the green stuff.
Yeah, and just, as a, as a bit, a bit of an aside, and this is a way down the road discussion, but we're. We have been kicking around some conceptual ideas of dealing with the, the. Plaza areas that we have and, and things that we can uh, uh, play around with a bit. Um, and, and really that's the, if you, if you know the center, it's the uh, it's the. The pedestrian connectivity to the, the strip where the Starbucks is and then uh, down to where uh, the. Um, well, the, the main part of the center is, and there's a, there's a good plaza that's there, but, but I, I would love to see it. Much more uh, conducive to gathering and those sort of things, so. Um, what, what we could, we could do at the time is look at any opportunities to in, in, improve uh. You know, the, all of the pedestrian areas, you know, again, over here, the, the big issue is elevation, um, because you have. You, you have a lot of up and down, so you, you'd end up having to step things here and there and, and, and you do just have those limited green spaces, but. That all said, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to down the road, look at a comprehensive plan to try to improve what we have. Um, because I think that, that does everybody good.
Yeah. All right, um. Other concerns commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I'd echo your comments, John, it's, I, I made the mistake of looking at, used to be a Pizza Hut dot com while, while uh. We were here and, and, and will confess to a, a flash of, a, a couple sentimental flashbacks to my childhood, you know, I think. Find a, a red cup, a stack of bucket coupons and a greasy spatula and bury them in the wall somewhere for the archaeologists in the future, because you guys have done such a good job of. Erasing the uh, erasing the history of what's, and camouflaging it, so I think it's a great improvement.
Well, what's funny is, it's one of the few um, retail users that I know of, that when they debrand, they. Change the roof, um, if you look at the, if you look at the, exist the roof the way it is now, they took that. You know, the kind of hat looking peak off and just made it a, a simple, a simple peak, so. I think they're trying to, trying to avoid the uh, the rehash of that, that very noticeable roof line.
So they did that moving out, when they left, they, they actually.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that was, and that was, I think, one of their most important, when they, when they talked to us, one of their most important debranding uh. Components.
Mm-hmm.
They got, they got burned by a couple retailers, I think I read an article about somebody created the liquor hut. And, and kept the, the roof exactly the same, so makes sense.
Okay, I, I am, I'm not hearing any real concerns and I, and I think, I, I do want to say, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that you all are putting. Putting some serious investment into the, into the redevelopment of this corner, I think it's a great thing. Um, and, and it's, it's all very much in keeping with the quality of the rest of the center and the quality that we expect to see. Um, on retail development in this area, so, so nice work and, and um, I, I don't think, think there's anything else we want to attach this for conditions, is that, is that fair commissioners?
Correct, nothing else.
Okay, so I think with that, um, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and staff report findings and recommendations. I move that the planning commission grant AFP eight eight seven one dash twenty twenty-one amendment to final plan. Approval finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city zoning ordinance. With the three conditions is read into the record.
Second.
All right, so moved to second, and Commissioner Wessel.
Hi.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Hi.
Commissioner Coffin.
Hi.
Commissioner Winborn.
Hi.
And all but I, uh, thank you all very much, that passage unanimously, good luck, looking forward to seeing uh, sixth, next chapter of uh, of that site.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, that wraps up our, our sort of regulatory agenda that we go now to, um, from the commission. I'm in no particular order, um, as these little boxes start to tumble around, uh, Danny, anything tonight?
No, I, I shared with, with Greg earlier tonight, um, prior to our meeting, and I'll just say it on the record that, um. That, um, there's, there's can, a, a little contention to, um. To uh, participate in the MPCA annual conference and I'm trying to uh, resolve that contention and I'll, I'll get back to Greg soon about that.
Okay.
So many people trying to get in.
That's a good problem.
Yeah. Where's them, okay. Uh, Phil, anything tonight?
Nope, nothing for me.
All right, thanks. Good luck with your porch.
Thanks.
And Matt anything tonight?
No, no, just that I need to buy Phil a Netflix subscription or something, just to sit.
Distract him from real, from his productive work?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, no, no, send him to my house, I have plenty of projects.
Who got the Netflix, so that, that's for the kids and, and the wife, I, I got, I got stuff to do.
Okay, all right. Sit with her then.
Um, Lloyd, anything tonight?
Uh, just to remind everybody, on Saturday night, I guess from uh, six until eleven PM. At Kentland's Lakeland's Center is gonna be a big uh, open. Air night kind of festivity that it's an annual event and everyone's invited from the city and from around. And to partake and to uh, patronize the restaurants and all the good, good shops that are in the Kentland's Lakeland's.
Good, oh, okay. Yeah, the, the formal name is Kentland's Under the Lights, is that right?
We got it, yeah, yeah.
All right, and, and if you want more information, I think that's the, who's, who's organizing that? Do you know, is it part of the foundation or is it?
Yes, it's the Kentland's Community Foundation.
Okay, so more information's, I'm guessing, available at that website. Excellent, uh, good, thank you, I have nothing to add tonight, so let's do the staff updates, Greg, how are we looking for meetings?
So just a reminder, this is the planning commission's only meeting in August, um, we do have a joint work session on August twenty-third. Um, and then our next meeting is September first.
Great, already into September. Hard to believe.
Greg, the, the twenty-third, am I correct, that's the historic preservation uh, text amendment?
Correct, correct.
And is there, I'm sure there is, I'm, is there an advanced sort of outline or working points or stuff to review and prep for beforehand?
We have not drafted the ordinance yet, the work session is to go over some ideas that staff has with the commission and the council. On before we hit down that, that rabbit hole, let's say.
Okay. All right, very good. Director Schlipting, what's the news from your office?
Yes, good evening, everybody, I've been out for ten days, so I only have a few things, but um. I did want to let you all know that on Monday, the city uh, went back to a full mask mandate at all times at city facilities. This is due to the rise in the Delta variant and um, you know, I think we had reported that. We were planning to go lot, go back to in-person meetings for the planning commission starting on September first. Um, not sure about that at this point, um, Tanisha has pushed back all return to work from the. Monday or the Tuesday after Labor Day to October first, so um. Little bit in flux um, there, so, but I did want to uh, give you an update on uh, some mayor and council activities. That are not, um, you know, that you will not be uh, required to attend, but are important to what you, your work. And on uh, the next mayor and council meeting on August sixteenth is the mayor and councils. Um, policy discussion on Lake Forest Master Plan. Um, we're hoping that will, that will go very smoothly based on your very positive recommendation at your last meeting. Um, on August thirtieth, um, on the agenda right now, we're not quite sure if it's, it's still tentative, but. Um, is an annexation amendment for Monument, they um, are very interested in doing a new. One hundred and thirty thousand square foot life science building in, at the Monument campus, which is exciting. Uh, but they need an annexation agreement to do that, and that's on the uh, August thirtieth agenda. And then um, September thirteenth is a work session, it's not a joint work session. Uh, but I encourage you all to watch it or attend. Um, on amendments to the adequate public facilities ordinance, because the county has adopted a new fee. That will help fund. Um. School construction and, you know, as you may remember, five years ago, we adopted changes to the APFO, which would. Allow for uh, projects that were in um, districts that had. challenging school capacity to have developers pay a, a fee for that. And it was a graduated fee and it was a very complex thing, but then like several months later, the county eliminated that fee and the authority to charge that fee came from the state came because the county charged that fee. Now the county has a new fee and we want to amend the A P F O so that we can charge the fee as well. And I think that's all I have tonight.
All right, thanks. Thanks very much. Frank, thanks for joining us. We didn't, we didn't have any legal challenges tonight, so you didn't get to sharpen your teeth on anything. Sorry about that.
No, but I, I was here nonetheless and nothing, nothing more to add. I think the, I will say the specific date now for staff to return to the, to the city, which John was talking about. I think the exact date is October fourth. And, and it is open, you know, as John said, it is an open question as to whether the September date will change for commissions to be in person. We also do understand the county, actually tomorrow, is going to be looking at as part of the health regulations, potential changes and mask mandates and, and some other restrictions. So this is a bit like last year, we were hoping that by now be moving on and we'll just have to be flexible with the, with the, with the health impacts.
Sure, sure. All right. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for that, Frank. And I think we're all sensitive to that, that there's, there's always, we have to kind of pivot as needed, don't we? All right, Sam, thanks for presenting tonight. Thanks for sticking around. And if there isn't anything else from anybody, I don't see any hands waving or buttons going up, please have a good evening and enjoy the rest of your week. We're adjourned.